Okay, we call a meeting to order. Today is February 13th, 2023, and this is our regular scheduled meeting for the month. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. It's always a pleasure to us to see the public come out and see what's going on in our board of commissioners meetings. And also welcome our accomplishments, one of his staff members here also, and glad he can be with us to see what's going on here in the county. But we go ahead as always to start our meeting out with our prayer and pledge, and Commissioner Walker's going to lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Ellis will lead us in our pledge.
Start, Mr. Chairman. Dear God, thank you, dear Lord, another day, your Lord gave us on this earth. Dear Lord, we thank you for your many, many blessings, dear Lord. You mean awful good to us, and we'll say thank you tonight for all you've done, must have all for your son Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins, and rose three days later. Dear Lord, I just pray that we meet tonight, dear Lord, to give us wisdom and guidance, and help us to make the decisions that will be in the best interest of the people. Dear Lord, that we have the honor of representing here in McDowell County, and I just pray, dear Lord, your blessings now upon our county, our state, and our nation. Dear Lord, I just pray you be in there, military men and women, dear Lord, overseas, dear Lord, that are protecting the servant, dear Lord, that they be there. Elected officials, dear Lord, beyond us and other boards, and dear Lord, on a national and state level, dear Lord, give them wisdom and guidance. And dear Lord, we just thank you for all you're doing, and pray amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, life.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are your motion to approve the meeting?
Sooner or later.
Motion to second, assist. All in favor, say aye. Your motion, we approve the agenda.
Sooner or later.
Motion to second, discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Starting now on our performance tonight, we have the item A, the DRC is not here yet, so we'll move on to item B. It's Linda.
I think she was closing up the office, so she may be in the round.
Can we move on to item C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's the CDVG public hearing agreement, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Would you like the...
Oh, okay. Well, this back there, we have the NJROTC guys here, we got, so we welcome them. We've got Stephen Ross and Jeff McClure.
Stephen Ross, sir.
Okay, Stephen, I'd like to ask you if you will come on up and introduce your team. And I see that you've won the North Carolina and South Carolina State, and you were going to the national...
I'll let them explain. Okay, would you please come over, please? Want you to face the audience, or face the...
Talking to...
Yeah, face the audience.
Okay.
All right, guys.
Right there. Now, wait till... So these are the four members of the, what we call our 18, the number one, the vars 18, so to speak. Fairly young team, she's a freshman, they have two sophomores and a junior, and they have won the national, they've qualified for national championship three of the last four years, and won the state championship four years in a row. And I'll let them explain to you what a miserable kind of head.
Um, well, we're glad that we qualified for nationals, but when we got to the airport, I remember fixing to go to Utah, they said that the weather was too bad and the flight was canceled. And you're like, oh, okay. But it was okay, we had a fun time in Texas playing on the ice and stuff. We're looking forward to next year and say we've been qualifying.
It's been a fairly good year. We've all increased in our scores greatly, especially during the start of the year. So, I mean, we are very glad to have at least qualified, have had at least that chance to attend, but, um, again, like you said, very disappointed that we didn't go. Looking forward to next year, hopefully to improve and be even better and actually make it.
Whenever we do qualify for nationals next year, we will do far better than what we would have done if we did go to nationals this year.
It's fine.
We're certainly excited for what the accomplishments you guys have made, and we want to bring in here and give you a little award to recognize what you've accomplished. That's quite a feat to accomplish what you did with the state of North Carolina, that's a big deal. Now, do you guys, each of you plan to make a career in the West there?
I don't know.
You don't? Okay. Good, good.
Mr. Chairman, out of curiosity, so Summer, if any of your teams high score correctly, so what would be the high score, what's the maximum score if you shot a perfect round?
A 600.
And what were you at right there?
About my average, uh, 5, 530.
Praise him, praise him.
That is good, that is good. I'm really proud of you guys.
What kind of firearms you...
Um, Crosman Air rifles.
That's good. Maybe next, next year, maybe they'll let you use assault weapons. But anyway, we're very proud of you guys, and we want to present you with the certificate tonight, and I'll have, I hope for it to come out, if they will. I'm gonna read the first one, and each of them will say the same thing, and then I'll just present them by your name. Summers is, it says, "County McDowell County will declare a certificate of accomplishment. This certificate is awarded to Summer White for outstanding involvement and representation of McDowell High School and the McDowell County community as the NJROTC state champions at the North Carolina/South Carolina Marksmanship Competition by McDowell County Board Commissioners." So I'll present that to you, and then we have Anthony, Mr. Keller, next with Cole Cook, and Daniel Will. So, uh, we're gonna beat the one. What grade are you all in?
I'm a 9th.
No? I'm a junior.
10th.
Y'all got a style of future here, can't forget. Get them, y'all get some line of range, y'all get ready. Let's get your coach over here, too. Yes, sir.
You can get behind a little taller, Diesel.
I know, yeah. I'll take a little.
All right. One, two, three.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you all.
Good job, y'all. Congratulations. All right, going along now to item B, the tax collector item, which got this land to Andre right here tonight, and she will lead us off.
Hello.
Please, please.
Good seeing you guys. So I'm here tonight to talk about the advertisement of the tax liens for delinquent property taxes as of January 31st. As of, I gave you guys one February 1st, the packet that showed what the balance was as of January 31st, which was $1,625,844. And that included all county and district taxes. Also, I'm presenting for their review, the list of property owners and unpaid taxes. And the third thing is the advertisement for the unpaid taxes, which will be as of March the, I'm sorry, February 28th, March 1st, to be advertised. I would like to recommend we do the advertisement date of March 15th. That would be the published date, and the last day to pay would be March 8th. This would be the printer's deadline marked off of that. The advertisement and delinquent notices were mailed out to taxpayers first of February per general statute, so they have 30 days' notice to get them paid by February 28th. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion, if you're free, to receive the list and placement of the list in McDowell. Do we have a motion? Second. Second, discussion. All in favor of motion, say aye. Okay, thank you. That was quick, Mr. Chairman.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, item C, we have a CDVG public hearing agreement, and this time, I will declare some public hearing notes for any purpose of receiving comments on the CDVG application. And we'll let Mr. Wood lead us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, this is an unusual public hearing for CDVG, and the county has already received the funding that we're covering. So usually, you have the hearing first, you apply, and then you hopefully receive. If you recall, this was the second application we made back in the fall. We had about a two-week turnaround, and this is based on the sample we were given. They knew it was quick, and they said, you can have your second hearing when appropriate. And so that's what tonight is. So again, McDowell County applied for a CDVG application back in the fall. Total amount of the application and the award, this instance, was $5 million. This is for housing for low-to-monet income individuals, and specifically for a transitional housing project, which we'll hear from Mr. Hampton about. Total of $2,650,000 would be spent on other public facilities, which is the housing in this instance. $300,000 is scheduled for administration, $50,000 on parks and playgrounds, which is actually the landscaping and grounds of the property, and $2 million on public sewer. 100% of the CDVG funds will be used to benefit of low-to-monet persons. So again, this is then applied for and received by the county, and we'll talk a little bit later about some of the actual receipt of those funds and the approval of the agreements. So I have to go through those aspects of the funding, as has been done, and now you can call on Mr. Hampton, so choose to give information about the project specifically, and then hear public comments about it.
Good. Mr. Hampton, you've got a story, sir.
Good afternoon. We are very excited about this project, and I know we've been partnering for a while in developing a lot of the concepts of it. Basically, for the sake of everybody that's here, this is going to be program housing for people in McDowell County who have been in some way impacted by incarceration in their lives, and also addiction. It's going to be secondary, long-term transitional housing. It's designed to help, because we have already emergency transition housing, but we can't get people out of our emergency transition housing to get them into permanent housing because it's such a huge leap in the income need and life skill capacity. And so we're getting logjammed and being able to help more people off the streets into our regular transition housing. So this apartment housing will give us the capacity to move people from our transition housing into long-term transition housing, where we'll continue to work with them, they'll continue to undergo case management, they'll continue to be involved with freedom of life and in programming and in accountability, as they continue to develop life skills, financial management and other life skills, hopefully also growing in their employment, earned income capacity over that period of time. So then the goal is that after a year or so in this long-term transitional housing, then they will graduate into permanent housing at a much more capable place of being able to sustain then the permanent housing, because if you know anything about random McDowell County, it's only going in one direction, and as well as the housing cost in general, not just in McDowell. So we're trying to use, we will be using this apartment housing to help us plug a big gap in housing capacity, so hopefully our clients will be far more sustainable when they get to the permanent housing. And our ultimate goal is to help them purchase and own, not just rent, but purchase and own permanent housing. So this is going to be very significant housing, and I will also add that this is a pilot program for the state. There's not another program in the state doing this within the reentry formerly incarcerated dynamic. And so once again, McDowell County, with your great leadership, with the wonderful people we have in our community that work so hard together, we're taking, we're being an example to the rest of the state of the potential of what can be done. And so I want to, just to let you guys know how much I appreciate you and this partnership we've been at for a while. Also, Dogwood Health is also involved in this, Dogwood Health Trust, they actually gave us $250,000 loan, which gave us the capacity to originally purchase the property on which the apartments is now going to be developed and built. And so this is involving a lot of moving parts. Obviously, the county, you guys are heavily invested in this, but also the city and the utility expansion, there's a lot of partnerships involved in this project, and we're very excited to be part of it. I just want to thank all of you for the great work that you do, and also your staff, they do pretty good, too.
Well, we certainly do, for all that you do, and the dedication you've had for this county. We appreciate that. Commissioner, Commissioner, happy to come.
Question, Dan, how many units will we, our apartment units, will we have available on that side?
Our goal will be 44.
Will you have anybody that will be, I'd say, a freedom of life ministries apartment, somebody to help those men and women as they transition to that apartment unit for the time period until they transition out?
Are you talking about will we have people from our staff living in the project? Yes.
Who have a comment? Whoever comes, he says some comments about, concerning this. Yes, Jim?
Where is this?
The address is 3224 Highway 70 East. It's halfway between here and Nevo, heading out 70. If you know where Piatt Auto Parts is, if you're heading down out of Marion towards Nevo on 70, it's about a mile and a half out, there's land that sits there on the right, and it's gonna be literally on a ridge line on that property. Yes, sir.
You have a comments? Okay, there's another comment, so very much can go outside. Second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you, Larry.
There are a few action lines related to this grant and a round one grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve the grant, and approve the grant administration with a force.
Second. Question, second, you have a discussion on this? If not, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. That's all for that. All right, let's move on. Next on the end, item D, is our ordinance update, and we have Adrian Keller and Mr. Ron Harmon here with us tonight, so we'll turn the floor over to you guys.
Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you. Tonight, we're requesting an amendment to false fire alarm ordinance. If you remember back in, end of 2014 or 2015, start of 15, this went initially through the planning board, we brought to you, this was the first time we had had ordinance that addressed false fire alarm activations in McDowell County. And at that time, there was a number of institutional facilities, specifically assisted living facilities, that were having a large amount of false fire alarm activations. Tonight, at the request of the Fire Commission, they requested the county take a look at the ordinance and recommended an increase in the penalty for moving beyond your two allowed false fire alarms without it being a violation. So initially, our ordinance had within the calendar month, you're allowed two false fire alarms prior to you being issued a violation. You would be issued violation on alarm number three, that wasn't a legitimate alarm. We're requesting to change that language and move it to consecutive 30-day period. The other change that we are requesting, as I said, to increase the penalty, it escalates as we move beyond the third, fourth, fifth violation. We have, historically, when you look back at the number of violations our office has issued to the facilities, we have not issued any violations to residential homeowners since this ordinance came into effect in 2015. We've issued one citation to a business during the entire length of time this ordinance has been out, a commercial business. All of the violations have been centered around assisted living facilities, specifically one facility as of today, we've issued 78 violations since 2015.
To one facility?
To one facility. It continues to have issues of having multiple false fire alarms. The North Carolina law and DOI requires the fire departments respond to the fire alarm activation even if a homeowner, facility representative states that it is a false fire alarm. And that is required. So while the fire department may back down to a routine response, they're required to go and verify that it is a false fire alarm, and they just can't cancel it. And this is a significant burden on volunteer fire departments, therefore, they are requesting this change being enacted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we approve the changes that's presented.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, just say aye. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Keller. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, the board of commissioners asked the planning board to look into the issue of firearms being shot within close range of occupied dwellings. We took up that charge and looked into the issue, and what you have before you is what the planning board came up with, could not be incorporated into the noise ordinance as it is written, because the noise ordinance exempts firearm for target practicing or for hunting activities, training, target practices. So therefore, we had to do, what we did was a standalone ordinance, it puts a 300-foot distance between occupied dwellings and gunfire, and, but we still went in there to the general statute reference for legal hunting practices. We did not put a timeframe on day or night. The board felt like that there were enough, that the 300-foot distance should take care of most of the issues, because that would put a safe distance between occupied dwellings and gunfire. I have vice chairman, I have chairman in his wits and vice chairman of meetings standing here if you have any questions.
Okay. One question. Was there not already something in the ordinance about shooting after dark? If, you know, the horse is allowed for hunting purposes, but if there are no stipulations on that?
The noise ordinance puts a timeline for disturbances, which is, let me see, it's 11:00 PM...
Sunday through Thursday.
Sunday through Thursday, and 12:00 PM Friday and Saturday. But again, gunfire is exempted from this if it's for target practice or hunting practice. Basically, the noise ordinance exempts gunfire unless there's some reason that it is too close or dangerous or whatever. So this ordinance was put as standalone to separate it from the noise ordinance and that exemption. So the noise ordinance, what you're saying, right, is not, doesn't retain firearms, so they, so definitely respond to a call of somebody shooting, you're saying he goes out there on the scene and he can't look at the noise ordinance and apply that to the gunfire? If it is for target practice, recreational shooting, hunting, things like that, so most people are gonna say they're target practicing, get by.
Let me just, let me just say something. I contacted Ron last week. Where I live, I've got a target down in the woods below my house, nobody around. And the question I asked Ron was, if I want to step out in my front yard and shoot at that target, can I do it? His answer is, I cannot, the way this ordinance is written. And I'm sure that there are other folks in the county that are just like that. I have always been opposed to any ordinance or any other restrictions on firearms. I think after serving with the sheriff's office for 19 years, there's already enough in the general statutes that take care of the safety, and I'm opposed to the ordinance as it's written.
I'll do it the same as you. I'm all for the ordinance with the exception, you know, this can't be left, the wording's got to change, the word, you know, like he said, if he wanted to walk out, it's a, by what you're saying, that your dwelling would still not let you fire at them, that makes no sense to me. And if I'm, if he's wanting to go out and shoot as long as the next dwelling is more than 300 or 300 feet or more from you, what's the issue there? I don't understand why you would have to consider your own house when you're the one that's doing the shooting.
Well, let me say something else right along that line. Where my son lives, he can't walk out in his backyard behind his storage building and shoot into a bank without having to walk across the highway and get written permission from his neighbor.
Written permission's not in this document.
Okay.
It is 300 feet from an occupied dwelling home.
So he couldn't do that?
If the next home that's occupied is within 300 feet, yes, sir.
Even though he's shooting in a safe direction and a safe bank with a max?
I do know for a fact that there's been a lot of controversy over shooting, and a lot of it's coming from, you know, some of the neighborhoods that, you know, has a lot of Hispanics in it and not casting any stones at them, but I've heard that there's been some complaints in those areas that they're shooting a lot, and this is people that have complained to me, and, you know, there has to be some, something done. I don't want, I don't want somebody, which, you know, I don't have that problem, you know, I'm more than 300 feet from anybody, but I would hate to be living 50 feet, well, 300 feet, I'd hate to be living 100 feet from somebody and them out with a continued need target practice. And they can do it anytime they want to, by the ordinances we have now. Blessed to, they can do it anytime they want to. That would be very annoying to me, you know, and I'm a gun enthusiast, you know, I have lots of guns and I like to shoot them, but that's, to me, it's disrespectful to your neighbor to get out, especially after darkness. We've got a $20,000 gun range down here, why are people not using it? I mean, we've got a nice gun range down here.
One of the issues that the board didn't address was the... One of the issues that the board didn't address was the operating hours of the gun range, nine to five. The working public doesn't have the opportunity to utilize that very often. The planning board would like to see maybe some fault given to open up the range during extended times, especially during the summer when it's winter, more daylight, where folks can get off work and go shoot their guns. That should also help to address the issue of these backyard shooters who they've got an opportunity to go shoot somewhere else inside of their.
A lot of it for that. I was looking at the hours at our gun range. But personally, I, I think, you know, I'm just not really happy with what's rubber force completely yet. Personally, I'd like to see, take it back. But again, but now, if the board wants to vote on, or if you're out here tonight, that's fine.
I'm with the consensus so far of, if I'm outside my house and shoot, which is well over 300 feet from my neighbor's room, and I could be able to stay within the guidelines, I would be against it.
Can I preface the charge that we were given from the board to show the parameters that it worked under? We were asked to look at shooting within heavily residential areas. And the board looked at several distances, 200 feet, 300 feet, and the consensus by the board was that 300 feet should take care of about 90% of your issue of folks shooting within heavily residential areas. And again, that was consensus of the planning board, that is, their recommendation hasn't been valuable to you from the charges that was given.
But again, it would be against ordinance if I went outside my house and I have anybody within 300 feet, that I shoot within 300 feet of my house. I would be against, that would be against the ordinance.
That's not the way that we read that. We read that as it's 300 feet from the nearest neighbor.
But that's the way you answered my question. I asked you that question. I said, if I, can I, can I go out in my front yard? I'm not near anybody. Can I go out in my front yard?
That needs to be clarified in the.
Yeah, at least.
Yes, sir, because I was under the assumption you're talking about your neighbor was within 300 feet. I wasn't taking into consideration you're talking about your home residence.
If it's within my, the space of my residence, I, you know, if you're comfortable.
Yeah, I might, once you've got my porch.
I do shoot up my porch.
That's legal.
I suggest, I suggest that you take it back, get with our attorney, and see what's already on the books, North Carolina general statutes that cover this.
Is that a motion, Commissioner Gray?
Yes, sir.
Second motion. Any other suggestions?
I'll just point out, I'm against it as it's written right now, as Commissioner Green said. One thing you can take into consideration is a 300 feet of a dwelling or other building or structure that is designed to be occupied by human beings. Keep in mind the shooting range. There will have to be an exception in there for the shooting range, if there is a footage put.
There's not a dwelling that's a shooting range.
No, but it says other building or structure. So that's a building design.
They build there or are working there.
Yeah, I think the way that you're gonna do it.
Right. That, that would be entirely different than what.
But if it just said dwelling, that'd probably be okay. But it says other building or structure. So just something to keep in mind.
One, I had, I had a gentleman that lives just right, he can, the city line, county line, basically, he can see both of them where he lives at. He's got an issue with neighbors who go out at 10, 11, 12 o'clock, they get drunk, they've got a fire pit, they take nine millimeters and 30x special just to fire off. Sheriff's Department's been out there multiple times. When they go there, they say their target practice is dark, it's dark. The only thing I'll add to the discussion is this, I prefer, and I spoke to Benny about it too, and probably Benny saw this sometime, but I would prefer to see something that would have exceptions, but no, no just firing off guns after dark unless you've got, you know, some exception of some kind in there. That's just where I'm looking from.
So we've got a motion second. All in favor, say aye. So I guess.
Take it back and believe in the general statutes and bring you something back?
Bring you something.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Chris Chairman, I think we need to also, since we've got the chair and vice chairman of the board back there, and both of you have long and serving members of that board, acknowledging and thanking for this.
Yeah, both have, the initial, both of you guys have been on the exit, what, Benny? You've all been in exit 20 years, I guess, haven't you?
Of course.
That's a lot of work and dedication to this county, and we appreciate that, certainly appreciate it. And it pays nothing if just people that are willing to give their time and their energy to give this county, and we thank you for it, we appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay. Next one, the agenda lead is to get the community, what will be studying, and we have Toby Grant, YMCAs, you've got a few, Toby.
Hi, Danny, gentlemen. Really, I'm going to give the show over to Brad, Brad is our sports and youth and family director, but I wanted to tee him up. This past year, the YMCA was able to leverage through donor dollar support, over $885,000 worth of charitable services into the community. Primarily, that's found in childcare and nutrition. This small grant that we got through, through our YMCA of North Carolina was for about $4,000. And Brad led a community, a community effort. Really, it's around leadership development, bringing people together from diverse backgrounds, giving them a project, letting them own it, and then reporting back out. So that's really what tonight's about. I do want to make a note that I realize that you may not have the authority of purview for the outcomes of this. It's more of an opportunity for Brad to be able to speak in front of his leaders and for you to see that the YMCA is bringing people together, so thank you. This is Brad Brad.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing us and letting us spread some light on our Walkability audits. So we have the why, how, and what, why, like Toby was talking about. We want to identify and nurture the next leaders of McDowell County and get them in projects that's helping their, their communities. So that's why I was involved with the McDowell Walkability audits. We partnered with Corporate Memorial, the McDowell Trails Association, the West Marion Community Forum, and Men of McDowell, as well as KULA. So we had leadership from high schoolers up to retirees involved with this program. It was great to see all the different points of view that all, everyone brought to the project. Not only was the why for nurturing our next leaders of the community, but this also, the walk audits were to shed light on issues and trends in the communities that are important to our partner organizations. We're sponsored by the Act of Communities Grant, which was funded by the CDC. And not only were we able to do the walk audits with this grant, but we were also able to support McDowell Moves, which is every October in McDowell County, and lots of partners with that. And also, we were able to host various walking clubs with very diverse groups of age and ethnicity with those as well. I'm going to pass out some of our AARP toolkits, if you guys just want to take a look while I go through this. This is what was given to all members that helped out on our walk audits. So you can just flip through and see what we're looking for in these processes. As you can see, this explains what a walk audit is. Walk with communities to promote health, foster sense of connection in community among residents, and provide an overall sense of place and belonging, and helps make a neighborhood level for people of all ages and life stages. Our walk audits assess an area of walkability by observing how pedestrians and drivers use a particular street or intersection, recording information about that use, and then, if needed, making a case to that community or local leaders for change. So this year, we did two, or in 2022, we did two walk audits. Our first walk audit was selected by the West Marion Community Forum, which was Oak Avenue and Ridley Street, also known as the hill, the backside of it, where that hard turn where Addy Chapel is. So I explained the why, the how, how we did this was, we take small groups, between five and eight people, and you station in three different areas. So when we did the Oak Avenue Ridley Street, we basically started people down on High Street near Zaxby's. You stand there for 30 minutes, we head for Addy Chapel, and then basically over the House of Jameson on the West Edge of the street. What you do is, you split up, we did partner organizations, and you spend 30 minutes observing and recording, recording in those workbooks, and then moving on to different areas. So each group is overlapping each other so we can just observe and record what's going on in a specific time. We did ours on Saturday mornings over the summer, so it wasn't like a workday traffic. We were seeing weekend, weekend movements. Each group was given tablets to record their findings and highlight issues that we've found on our works. So first one, I'll show you a couple slides from our Oak Avenue Ridley Street. Like I said, it was led by the West Marion Forum and the Men of McDowell and McDowell Trails Association, supported us heavily in this process. So we met Addy Chapel, had three groups of six to seven participants, and then we arranged ages, as you can see, from kindergartners to retirees. So we had a little bit, the entire community there is great fellowship, hearing the stories of the past of the community, how it was designed, and the processes that it's gone through to become what it has become today. So we compiled info and turned this into a short PowerPoint just to show you guys. As you can see, this is the entrance on the Oak Avenue. And really, it, this street was very well maintained, you know. After, all three groups came together, we combined our photos, and this was one that we found, there's a couple, that's a speed limit sign, as you can see, like in the summertime, sometimes that gets covered up. And our biggest concern was, anybody know where this is at? This photo, Oak Avenue, Ridley, right in front of Addy Chapel, it's a blind curb. The communities asked for one of those mirrors placed, that was our biggest concern, and we all saw their concern in that, in that area. Saw a few animals not chained up, they chained some people around the community. And then our second walk audit was Deer Park Road out in Nemo. This one was led by KULA. They selected this street. There's a large Hispanic population that live in this area, so they felt it was very important to shed some light to this street. This audit was a much larger undertaking. We had more volunteers, and it was great to see, most of them were high school kids, and they gave up a Saturday, a full Saturday to come out and, and bring awareness to their When we started this process, it, this one took us over five hours to do. We had the same how, the three observation points, one on each end of the street, and then we had one in the middle at Deer Park Health and Rehab. With this one, we found lots of signage that was damaged or destroyed, lots of, as you can see, lots of debris and trash scattered across the street. Walkability, we did see a few people walking up and down that road on Saturday. It's not like here in town, Oak Avenue, Ridley, which is heavily used even on that Saturday at 10, 11 o'clock in the morning, we had quite a few using those streets walked on. Here, it was all less than a handful of people. But, you know, KULA wanted us to bring, shed light to this, this area, and that's what we're here to do. As you can see, there's power lines with quite a bit of debris on them. That's what we found there in the Nemo area. We have done the screening again this year. We will be staying, we have, still have our same partners, and we'll be getting more partnerships this year, and we will be expanding our areas. We'd like to do one in Old Ford this year as well, as same local in Marion. In conclusion, purposes of this presentation, not only to highlight our young leadership that is growing in our, our smaller community partners, but we want to bring to forefront the safety and environmental issues that are present in the two very diverse areas of our community. We hope shedding light on these types of issues through community collaboration can open up further discussion on how to reduce risks for walkers in the community, environmental integrity, and eliminating safety hazards.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the findings of this study. Second. Any other discussion?
Would like to encourage you to take a street to Old Ford, too.
Yeah, we got to this here, sir. Thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, sir.
Good. It'd be tough to thank you as well for sharing. Next, we have, the Community Action Opportunities, we have.
Singogo.
Singogo.
Yes, thank you. Hi, hello. I'm here from Community Action Opportunities. We have been around since 1964. Community action agencies are all across the United States. They are federally mandated to exist, and we are a recipient of the Community Service Block Grant Funds, CSBG. We are designated by the governor to operate in six counties in western North Carolina, so we are in McDowell, Madison, Buncombe, Henderson, Transylvania, and Polk. We receive CSBG funds every year, and every year, as just part of the process, we are asked to submit an application demonstrating how we are going to use these funds, what our needs are in the communities that we serve, et cetera. So every year, we submit a packet to the county commissioners, and this is just part of the process as indicating what we are going to do and just notifying everyone of how we are going to use the funds that we receive. We operate what's known as the Life Works Program. We do have some other programming that we have, that we have executed in the past. Life Works is kind of our main program. We have traditionally had a long-term case management, self-sufficiency type program. So we help folks who are living in poverty get out of poverty by helping them complete training and education, by helping them get full-time living wage jobs, and then by helping them increase their financial capabilities. So we work with folks one-on-one to help them move forward. People can be in the program up to three years, sometimes up to five, depending on what their goals are. So we have a lot of partnerships that we rely on to do this work. Moving folks out of poverty can't be done by just one agency alone, so we work in partnership with lots of folks here in the community, Friendship Home and KULA, New Hope. We have received our allocation for fiscal year 2024. We are seeing a slight reduction in funding that just kind of goes each year. It's based on the percentage of poverty, so the federal funds come to the state, and then the state has a formula that they apply that is based on the percentage of poverty by county, and so those funds are allocated by county. So for McDowell, this current year, we are at $98,508. For this upcoming fiscal year, we will be at $97,825, so just a, just a little bit less. We don't plan on reducing any of our activities. We're still intending to serve the same number of people in the community and just kind of operate as usual. We have been really excited. Over the past couple of years, we had some special funding for COVID relief, and we partnered with KULA to serve some families who might not have otherwise received services, and that was really exciting. So it's been a good couple of years in McDowell County, and yeah, I'm here to see if you all have any questions or comments.
Sure. So you've got $941,000 to be dispersed to 26 counties, correct?
That's correct.
And we get $98,000 of.
That's correct. That's correct.
How do you determine who gets the majority? I mean, I know it's pretty equal, but there is some, just...
We don't, the state does. Yep, so that's allocated by the state. Yep, and then we do have an allowance. They like for us to stay within 10% of our allocation for each county. We tend to give, so Buncombe County, because it's the largest, receives the largest allocation. So we tend to give money from Buncombe County to all of our other counties so that our surrounding counties all receive above their allocation, and Buncombe County gets a little less.
So the 19 families in McDowell County, is there a process they apply to that already taken?
Kind of works through.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we have a website, and we also have, so our office is at 316 Ball One at NC Works. We've been there for quite some time, but we're also in the community. So the coach, we have one full-time coach assigned to McDowell County. And that coach goes into various businesses and will kind of hang out and be there, like at Freedom Life, at the Friendship Home, at New Hope, and will be on-site to help folks apply and make sure that people know who we are and what we do. We also get a lot of folks who are coming to NC Works. We have a really strong partnership with McDowell Tech. So yeah, we try to be as visible as we can in the community, but the application comes through us.
Sure, what's the average award for the families? Is it equal, or is it based on...
Oh, like in terms of like...
So we have $98,508, we have 19 families. Is just that total number about 19 families, or is it based what?
No, sir, so only a very kind of small portion of that goes towards what we call direct assistance. So not all $98,000 will go directly to families. That covers our staff costs, our admin costs, our, you know, pools, all of those pieces. And then there's a small percentage that goes towards what we call client services. So we like to tell folks that when they come into the program, they really gain access to two key things. One of those things being some direct financial assistance, although that doesn't go to individuals directly. We are not allowed to like write checks out to people who are in our program. We can pay for things on their behalf as long as it's demonstrated in their action plan. So when people come into the program, they work with their coach to develop an action plan that says, here are my goals, here are the steps, these are things that we're going to work on together. And so as long as there's something that is demonstrated that's going to help that person or the family move forward, we have some ability to help pay for things to remove barriers that would otherwise prevent folks from moving forward. But the other thing that they get access to is the coach. So it really is kind of a coaching program more than anything, where we're working one-on-one with folks and kind of walking alongside them.
And the coach tries to get them to more opportunities, correct?
Absolutely, and, you know, working with the life skills pieces, working with, you know, some of just the intimidation pieces of if you're trying to navigate a lot of systems, it's really overwhelming. And so to have someone who can kind of walk alongside you and say, I can go with you if you've never been here. You know, it's been 25 years since you've been in a classroom. Let's go together, check this out. That's kind of the really beautiful work that our coaches are able to do because we have these really deep working relationships with the folks who are in our program.
So it's probably better because the coaches could probably hook them into opportunities and programs that would be more beneficial in the longer term to the recipient.
Absolutely, that is, yeah.
That's why I want to make sure, so it's mainly going to salaries for the coach, for the most part?
Yeah.
Or that's still a good thing, and the fact that that coach is going to hook them in and put them in more than any other coach?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you have an idea of what the money was in 21 coming to?
Oh, okay, so it was significantly less. So in fiscal year '22, I think we were roughly $74,000. I think 21 might have been about $68,000.
Well, that's good, we've got $98,000.
Agreed.
So I wish the best of luck, and appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I look, we endorse her plenty.
Say it. Want to say it to endorse me? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, ma'am. Next on the agenda, I'm going to three hundred old business. I'm A is 2023 property reevaluation update, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, just a very brief update to let you know that we are on track to have the notices sent out in two weeks from now. So it'll be February 27th. And so those should be hitting mailboxes around the first of March. I spoke with someone today who was very interested in that information, and definitely wanted to know how he could appeal. And so I let him know that the letter will have lots of detailed information on an appeal, if that's what people want to do. As I've said repeatedly, and I was said last month by staff and Mr. Kane, there were multiple rounds of appeal if someone so chooses to appeal. And that's their right, it's a property order, this is the time to do it. After this year, it becomes much more challenging, has to be based on certain factors. So the staff will be ready for those appeals and be able to answer any questions that come to them.
Thanks for that. All right, go along. I'll be Spain, you're about to see your day, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, this is related to the allocation the board made several months ago for a slightly different population than we've been serving previously for Spainneer. So again, this is not related to the existing DSS associated program. This is the program you set up with the $19,500 allocation made, I think, back in December. And so Ms. Wright, who is here, and I, and Ms. Bell met several weeks ago to talk about some rough parameters to present to you. And so the DSS program that has been in existence by statute is limited to 100% and below of federal poverty level. And you had indicated through prior action, you wanted to have something above that level. So what is proposed is a between 100 and a 200% level for poverty, federal poverty on income. The DSS program has a two-household, two animal per household limit per year. The recommendation here was three. It could be two, it could be four, it's just where we came up on the number. And the idea is to try to get as much impact done as possible, as soon as possible. And we do have limitations. In the memo, I do mention that both local clinics have agreed to participate, which is tremendous. We do appreciate their support in all our different programs over time. They do ask that we do limit the number of procedures that are being scheduled under this program. And so one clinic has talked about more than 25 per quarter. We're still waiting to hear from the other one. But it'll probably be consistent because they're very busy. And so we're trying to work with them and respect them, giving them a significant discount for these procedures. So get Ms. Wright is here if you have any clarifying questions. If not, we'd like to get started on advertising this as soon as we can.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we approve as presented with the incoming household limits?
Say it. Motion, say, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next, I'd say building projects, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, so just a couple of, probably maybe I don't understand, several capital projects that are ongoing that I'll do quick updates on. And please throw up a hand and stop me if it's, if you need to. No worries. So the Recreation Center project is the first one I will talk about. Mr. Marsh and I met virtually with the architect's team last Wednesday to hear an update on the bidding schedule. That is still scheduled to go out around the first of March. So I don't know if it's the first or around the first week of March. That meeting was very detail-oriented about where outlets should be located and very exciting things like that. But it is moving very rapidly toward the bid date. And we understand and appreciate that the firm is doing a lot of projects, even in this community and sure others. But this is something we're trying to get moving and have been trying to get moving for a very long time. We are under strict schedule from the state as well, so it's not just because we want to, we need to move. Likewise, in the services building, we have an architect from a different firm working on drawings there. He has met probation parole staff about a month or two ago to hear their requirements. Those have been laid out in writing to Mr. Deal, the architect. We did have about a week or two pause on the project because we did not understand that the program serving children had to be moved off that floor. It seems obvious when you say it now. But the Guardian Light Program, Project Challenge, would have to be moved off the second floor. And so we had to find a landing spot for them, which has been accomplished. And recommendations to move them to the current probation office on West Port Street that we're utilizing. That's a long time from now, once everything's kind of shuffled around, so. But he's back on track. I did have a question earlier about bid schedule on that. I don't have an answer yet, but we'll leave it all out when I get that, get that date. If you've been on South Garden Street, if you've seen Mr. Callers' old haunting grounds there, the old station one, you'll notice it looks a little bit different. We did some abatement on the exterior of the building as well as the interior. And so it is definitely very ugly now, so please just pardon the appearance of that. We did list the building for sale on GovDeals, and so it is listed currently for bid. There is a minimum bid of $25,000. Again, people would be buying the actual frame of the building, whatever is above the ground. They're not buying the property, but the former building. So if you know anyone, we're going to push out the availability of that. We have had some calls about it already.
How long has that been for sale, being advertised?
I believe it's a minimum 30-day listing. And based on prior direction, if after a certain amount of time we have diventures, I think we're proceed, ready to proceed with...
Or...
We'll try that first. The DSS building, I'll talk more specifically, more detailed about this at our meeting next Monday when you meet with the DSS director. The staff has met with the architecture firm a little. We do have a proposal that we will present next week and give them more detail about. I do have a meeting, the reason I'm being a little bit, holding back on a little bit, we've finally been able to schedule a meeting with the DA to talk about financing. This is time on Wednesday. But two weeks ago, we had a very lengthy and detailed meeting with the State Department, being the DHHS, about how the reimbursement would happen over time. Again, I'll get more detail next week. It's very complicated, but glad to talk about it. And lastly, the processing plant, you directed last month to have appraisal done. We are going, that has been ordered as of about two weeks ago. I do not have a price yet, so we're asking to get on that appraisal. It has told us it will be about a week from now. So again, once we get it, I'm not going to wait until March, leaving, I'll just see it all out there then. Any questions about this?
What I know, the recreation contract with ArchTech, with that we talked about earlier, they've got Dwayne Riddle as the point of contact, and we talked about Chad Marsh should be...
Absolutely.
And you basically recommended that Chad should be the credit.
Yes.
And that's the point.
I think Mr. Riddle would appreciate that.
Because he's pretty busy too. Do you need a motion to do that, or just you can handle that?
He can be part of the motion to approve the contract.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion this time to approve the contract with a change of Chad Marsh being the contact person listed in the contract instead of Dwayne Riddle.
Say it. Motion, say it. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wood. Next on the D is the Carson House project agreement, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. And last year's state budgets, the county was in the state bill and provided $750,000 as an appropriation. We did almost immediately receive clarification from Mr. Senator Daniel, actually, that half of that allocation was intended for the Carson House. And so we're definitely in the business of honoring those sorts of requests. And so the board approved this back in October when we met at Carson House. And so what you have before you tonight is a template agreement that would... And I've shared this with Mr. Robert Athie with Carson House Board. It essentially just lays out the expectations of the Carson House and the county as it relates to the pasture, those funds, that entity. So I ask for approval of this, as well as the project ordinance that is attached that covers the entire 750.
Let's please the board.
Make a motion to approve, that's presented.
Got a motion to approve that presentation. Say it, we have a second.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote. Next is the water system project, Ms. Wood.
Lot of dates, but it's all good, all good news. Some of this is going to sound like a repeat, so I'll skip if it is repeating. We're waiting on engineers and architects, is a lot of the theme tonight, they're very busy. We are very, very close to phase one of our Nevo water system bids going out. It seems like whenever we're about ready to go to bid, we get another question from the state agency or DOP or somebody. So we're, I keep saying, within weeks, I mean, we're still two weeks, a year, so hopefully a lot less than that. But hopefully by next month, we'll be under the, for phase one. Phase two, they are almost done with the design of phase two, which again, as a reminder, would bring the line back almost to city limits on Royal Park Road. So we're moving quite a long. And at the end, we'll address the capital product ordinance. We are underway on the design for Hoppy Town Hollow Water Project that is still anticipated bid date of 2024. So no big rush there as far as updates. Appalachian Regional Commission has let us know that it is going to take some more time for the Exit 90 project, which is out, the Nevo exit. That has been submitted to Washington, we're waiting the award from the federal coach here on that. The study of water service to West Marine Elementary is underway. We have a preliminary engineering report that has been received. We've requested a meeting to go over that to make sure the pipe diameter is what we need and those sorts of things.
Will you be bringing in the school system as well and lighting them to the meetings with that?
Absolutely, through that. There is, as noted in the memo, there's an additional grant opportunity we're looking at for the spring. What we do understand is that it is not so much grant as opposed to forgivable loan, which we've never really gone after. So I'm not ready to ask for action tonight because there's a training at the end of this month. We want to get some questions answered before we do that, so stay tuned on that one.
Ms. Wood, the West Marine project, in front of the school, meeting about the school board, that's, to me, it's a big priority. Went to a school on there and picked up a volunteer fire department, that's already expressed a strong desire for that. So in this capital project ordinance you want us to approve, $11 million, how much, is that the pleading of the architect? Can you give a rundown or a quick on the revenues?
Sure.
Money we have available for water projects that we've got in, that's what we've been pretty forward for.
See, in about four or five minutes, we'll ask for approval on the American Rescue Plan Act. Nothing on that order until then. You're originally...
I didn't make a catch up call, just...
No, I actually...
I was looking at it, said, how many million dollars is going to be gone? And we sit there trying to get water to the school and the fire department and loop it to where we don't pay the water, we debt them. and loop it to where we don't pay the water, we definitely ground it at the end of the deadline.
Right, so you had approved out of the county's 8.9 million allocation, originally $3 million out of that project.
And that's not just being correct, isn't it?
Some of that has been allocated through prior action of this board. And so about 100,000 of that was set aside for Stacy Hill Road Water Connection, which is very short. You have set aside, out of that 3 million, again, at least 700,000 for sewer. That's around Universal, that's tied into the Forza Boat Project as well as the Universal Building. That number may be higher. All of these numbers may be higher once things are actually bid. So keep that in mind, at least 700,000. And so. There is approximately 1.9 million left under Nevo Water that's not allocated towards anything yet.
And that's off of our.
The three.
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir. So you have close to 2 million that's not been appropriated yet. What's not in here?
Different numbers are not firm until.
Until bids, until bids start coming back. We're, I hate to say iffy, but it's all stagnant. And so under that 1.9, 2 million, you're more than likely going to have to cover the Exit 90 match, because that's ARC funded project that requires a local match. You're probably, we did not anticipate a local match in Hoppy Town, but if bids come in higher than 15,000, we might have to do a local match. So some of these, I hate to speak for all that 1.9 to 2 million, until some of these things start coming back in with bids in hand to say, we're in good shape or we need to reevaluate. So it may be a little bit of both, depending on how some of the things work out. So we'll, again, hopefully, 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 hopefully within two months or so, we'll have the phase one back. We'll have a really good sense of how things are proceeding on the open market. I have heard material costs are going down, labor costs are not going down. So how that affects things will be seen soon. So I'd stay tuned and I definitely hear, we'll talk about West Marion in a second.
Material costs are expected to climb again.
Hopefully we'll hit a sweet spot on some of it. And we do have, just to kind of go ahead myself, because it may come up, it probably will come up when we do bid. We're, if you know anything about water lines, we use ductile iron construction. It's going to last at least 100 years. We may have to compromise with PVC. And so that's a little bit cheaper usually, depending on the market. It's a little bit shorter timeframe as far as lifespan, but you're looking at about a year to get ductile iron. And so we might have to go with PVC, which is still a great product. A lot of people use it, but there might have to be compromises.
Does PVC do approximately 70 years?
I think so, 70 maybe. Let's see, 100. So it's, it's a good product, but may not be catalyzed, might be a Buick. So whatever your favorite car is. So a lot to stay tuned to here. Once we get that phase one back, a lot of things start falling into place. But we're going to continue to go after every grant opportunity authorized and bring back any opportunity that we see that might even be close. If it's remotely close to any of our project of interest, we're definitely going to try. That's just our motto.
Would you stand up to the POC and say, I think?
Yes, sir. The action item under the water is the capital product ordinance for the 11 million.
Please, Paul. Who would approve it this weekend? Say. Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next one, would you provide an update?
It's a pretty short update. I just wanted to kind of keep the conversation going that we were working on things in the background. I hope to have had a three-part contract between the NC Department of Information Technology, Spectrum and the county to present to you for execution tonight. The company had a call set up. I've been receiving template agreements from the state and the company kind of backed off a little bit and postponed for about a month. I think the sheer number of contracts that they're, the Spectrum are going to work on, I think that they're just having to reevaluate their scheduling. So nothing to be concerned about at all. They're just pushing back just a little bit. I do have a meeting, Mr. Harmon and I will go to the Connect McDowell meeting, I believe it's March 15th. Just spoke to Ms. Deiter about that Thursday, another minute. Said it was serendipitous with some of the other things going on. So really we'll lean on those folks that have been studying this area to help make some innovations on our next round of funding with the capital again. So our next meeting will be, I think, before that meeting, but before that in March. No action.
Okay, thank you. Now, new business, I've made a new business, it's the 2023 legislative vote, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I put together a list of mostly it's not all capital projects, primarily from the county's perspective. There is one exception to that. We are asked by our federal and state representatives for projects that they can be looking for, funding opportunities for. It might be a grant, it might be other meetings. And so instead of your staff coming up with things just on the back of a napkin, I wanted to make sure that I'm running this by you and getting your approval, of course, to be able to submit these to our representatives. These are not in any particular order. If you would like to rank them, absolutely, that's your prerogative. Just hit them really quickly, you can read them. But we talked about a new DSS building. I'll just list the estimated cost on the papers. Right now, it's estimated to be 15 million. Universal Property Resiliency Projects is stream in Lake Worth. I mentioned that in some of my communication. But the big number, $12 million, that's if everything out there was just kind of started over from scratch. New bridges and new dams and everything else. And there are specific funds tied to resiliency that wouldn't be tied to like a DSS building. So it could be an option.
Are there issues, open issues out there with the dam or anything like that?
There are no safety concerns with the dam, no, sir. It is 50 years old, everything out there is 50 years old. And so it's at its capacity. I have had an engineer go out and look at it with a funding partner. You know, if this doesn't happen, to be looking for grant opportunities for us to do some stream bank restoration, Mr. Callender believes that at the warehouse near where he is, there's some stream erosion that needs to be addressed. The dam in the rear, it's fine. Again, there's no safety concern, but we'd want to do some rehabilitation on it to extend its life. There's 50-year-old culverts and things like that. So this is what.
Another thing to keep in mind too, while you're on that topic, you know, we, the county has become responsible for what is 16 watersheds here, you know, that.
Those are very expensive.
50, 60, 75-year-old. And they're, they're all have, they all have lived their life.
And they're all in pretty good shape, but they're 50, 60.
We're getting ready to get in with.
We need to add that to the list.
Well, you know, it's going to be something we'll be facing over the next, whether we're on board or not, but it's something that's in the near future, I would say, in the next 20 years. By all means, in the next 20 years, but it's something that just heads up, everybody needs to be watching. And something could happen overnight, you know, you don't know about.
Just finish out the list here.
I really agree with you, the first project, had a guy that does disc golf, it's real big now, big time. And he, we're quite, you know, the guy that actually got that going, the whole project. The, I don't know what you call it, where you throw a frame, the.
The T-box.
T-box, T-boxes, yeah. He said they need attention and so that just triggered me. He told me that I was getting a haircut the other day.
Well, we may be having, we may have to move those anyway, you know, with.
I think some of them with the construction, you have to permanently, the one center.
So our course is going to be short, it sounds like.
At least it might be a.
Redraft.
Final course, after perhaps.
Relivation project.
If not, they might be shifted a little bit.
We might need to go, I think, I know a congress that might be, have some act that exists, money might be cheap better, what do you think?
We'll see. So the Recreation Center, we talked about that earlier. We talked months ago about the initial cost of that was about $9 million to do actual building enhancement and expansion. And so these are 20, 23 numbers. Hopefully the numbers won't change that much in prior or future years. So 5 million for that transfer station complex improvement. You have identified roughly $500,000 to go towards the actual transfer station itself. That is something that will happen regardless of grants, state, federal funding. We'll talk about a federal grant application on that.
What was that number again?
This is seven on the transfer station complex. This would include sort of a state-of-the-art transfer station, a pretty big one.
Can we look at our road from the bottom to the top? Just a question.
Does definitely include a seven. And so the 550, if everything else falls short, will need to address the road and the facility itself. It might not have extra scales and the other things that we need.
Well, we need extra scale.
And so that, all of that is in here and all of that, except for the new transfer station building isn't fully going to be talked about.
I think my road is so hard to keep a road, whether it be concrete.
Big trucks.
Because of the big trucks in and out. I mean, it's. I know it's bad like it is, but it's really money wasted when you're spending on roads. I'd rather put a piece of equipment down and keep somebody on it, keep it as smooth.
And we need to make sure those homes are purely intended for craft.
It's a good idea. The, you know, the. Convenient. One of our favorite policies. Also have a standalone 911 center. We have a great relationship with the city of Marion. They have not evicted us from that, that spot. City is growing and we can anticipate that they might want that space back at some point. So we do need to be thinking about a long-term location for a new 911 center. And then last, and again, certainly not the least, and these aren't ranked, West Marion Elementary Water Service. The cost to go in the PR I mentioned, from the pilot truck stop to the school in that PR was $4 million. So quite a bit of cost just to get to the school, of course. And so without grant assistance or other funding, it would be very expensive. That's just to the school. That's nowhere else, other than the fire department, not to some of the other neighborhoods.
Again, I do think that the school board, I would ask for at least quarter of that from the school system because I do think that, yeah, we would benefit for other reasons getting on out there. But I do think that they need to kind of take it too.
Sure. That has been, sorry, education meeting has been conveyed, but we'll set up a meeting.
That's just one commissioner's opinion.
I would, I would prefer, I'm saying.
I agree with you.
The last item here is not a county project, but the college is asking for your endorsement of it since you are the capital funder for the college. They are planning, are hoping to construct Health Sciences and Public Safety Building on the campus for their departments under that purview, as well as a multipurpose gymnasium. And the cost is currently paying at 22 million.
Where do you get the money?
Hopefully other sources.
That's, I've figured out, yeah, I believe it. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we go ahead, because everything prior to this has been projects that the county directly, that we went through. So the McDowell Tech Health Science and Public Safety Building, I know every commissioner is for that and will support them. I want to pull that and listen to a separate motion to go ahead and endorse their project and maybe that might help maintain funding and they're pursuing funding. But I, I want to make a motion, we just go ahead and remove that off this list and go ahead and write a letter of endorsement for their building and that way they can start. And they're not waiting on us to do anything.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any vote? Good.
Mr. Wood, you had said these are not ranked. I don't know how the other guys feel, but if I was ranking these, the Social Services Building, number one, West Marion Water Service, number two, Recreation Center, phase two. And the rest, I don't mean where you want, but that'd be my top three.
I'm going to agree with the one, too. I do think that the transfer station, due to the budget situation that we're in each year, I do think that we need to.
We've got to do something with the transfer station.
Yeah, and I just, and we'll talk more about that later. But I'm with you.
Yeah, that's something we can get back, we can talk about a little later, Dave, on how we position things. If that's good, we can go back and do that.
When were you going to turn these, when was this list going to be submitted?
Do it tomorrow if you're ready.
I did want to ask the question, with the 16 water. That we're going to have some issues with. I would like to get something on budget. And it may not be on this list specifically, but I do think that we need to, last year we had, we approved a three-year budget, I think we need to go over five-year budget. I'm going to talk about it a little later, but I do think we need to ask, is there any other issue?
Hopefully, hopefully, you know, something like this happens, hopefully there'll be some federal money possibly there. That is all a possibility.
On any of these, what's.
They build them, then they dump them on us, that's basically what happens. For flood control.
We got new cops from the town, they might go do a survey.
He's not just, he's the one that's just here to listen.
We need to communicate. See where we can go, that's where.
I don't really see any of those today.
I'll be at senior senior first thing in the morning.
The watersheds you're talking about, the state does have a program this year, I'm sorry, it's approved last year's budget. It's called the STRAP program. Part of it was focused towards debris removal from creeks and streams and rivers, but part of it also could be applied towards restoration of structures. And so we do have.
Make sure we use every down that gives them that.
We have about 600 that has been discussed previously will go towards, at a maximum, 600 will go towards the louder structure, which is our hardest to maintain and is caught off the dangerous for staff to maintain because of the way it's constructed. So if that program continues, I know Soil and Water District Board is very enthusiastic to continue to get funding specifically for the structures themselves because they are old and we have had issues with them before, especially with the risers. And so they have to be maintained and they are maintained very well as much as they can be, but something gets to be 56 years old and needs a little TLC.
Mr. Chairman, to go back to the priorities, so it's February, almost March, well, halfway through at the moment. So the state, we need to probably get them a list as soon as possible. And that got, that's triggered and hit me, that we need to be the first in line. If they've got money in Raleigh to give away, we need to get our projects. And I think we need to go ahead and probably, just thinking now, that's when we can talk some more. Get a list down and I'm good with, I'm good with the DSS bill, I still mind, you already said what you thought. I'll go with the DSS bill, number one. Number two. Patrick, what did you say, you mean, is West Marion?
West Marion.
Number two of that. Number three, the transfer station. Number four, phase two. And then moving on down from there, how would the staff want to do it? Those are the top four.
I agree with that one, I agree with that.
Because we need to get, we need to get our hand out first. I don't want to be behind the line with. the line waiting, if we got, they got free money, we need to be getting, or requesting, will be the proper term. So I'll bring that form of motion, those top four, I'll wait until.
The other, I'll say issues of the, are the fire departments good with the fire trucks?
From the city?
From the city, yes, sir. I mean, and that's, you know, there's a, there's a few other things that are not on this list that are a little lower upon our priority list, I do agree, but I do think we need to have everything listed on there. Again, the watershed situation, you know, it may be something budgeted five or ten years up and down the road, we still need to start planning.
Probably at least do it one year, I would say.
Right, so it's, it's one of those things, I would like to just suggest, before we make, it's a suggestion, to maybe make a motion next week when we get together.
I'll give that.
For, so that we can challenge staff to come up with.
I would draw a motion.
With, with other large dollar amount targets, so that we can try to get a priority.
Agree with that.
And flow through.
Yeah, you will agree with that.
Yes, sir.
Bring that back next week.
We'll bring it back next week, so we can kind of discuss it, yep.
Right, sounds good. Was that all you had, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Now, let's look at the new opioid settlements, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. What this is, this is not related to the request you received from the Substance Use Task Force several weeks ago, that'll be addressed at a later time. This is related to additional settlements that have been negotiated on the county's behalf with five defendants, one being Teva, and then I already listed, Allergan, CDS, Walgreens, and Walmart. And so the council representing McDowell County and the other local governments and states has negotiated settlements with these five entities, and they are recommending that you settle with the five.
This will be in addition to what we already.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve the settlement with the forms of mention of us.
Any other discussion? All in favor of say aye?
Probably next month, if not the month after, to my understanding, there will be an additional MOA that will come out between the county's limited amount of cities and the attorney general, that is very similar to the one that's already been approved. To my understanding, they had to do a second MOA with this additional set, so it's not amending the first one, it's very unusual, but the timing is a little bit different if you look at the settlement timeframe, and I think that might be why. So I'll bring that, of course, next month.
Thank you. Next, I think we've already talked about this one, but if you would just touch it again, the.
Yes, sir. Probably about a year ago, Mr. Silver, he and I identified an EPA grant, they will do a notice of funding opportunity, federal agencies will, for grant funds that will be made available for various products, and this one specifically is for environmental-related products, and we are working, he is working on a grant application for four million dollars. That would go primarily with the restoration of the road, a new scale house, enhancement of the existing transfer station, and some other improvements on the sorting of our materials. What it also would do, if you remember, it's been, almost forgot, it's been so long, there was a discussion some months ago about relocating the convenience center that's currently at the gate, essentially relocating it back to where it used to be, to separate the automobile traffic from the truck traffic that is going in and out of that gate, can be a safety issue, especially around holidays, and so part of this process would move that convenience center back to that old location, which is now called Hag Services Drive. Where it gets complicated, if it's not complicated enough, is that part of that site is about half on state property, and so we understood this after looking at property boundaries, there are actually a couple of things, we're asking for you to approve the grant application, committing the five fifty of associated funds that we've talked about, state fund, all to go to force a match. We're also asking to allow us to contact the state to ask if they would allow us to utilize that portion of state property for this site, if and when it is relocated. So this would be part of the Marion security property.
I hear a question now.
I'll make a motion, as presented.
Say it. Any other discussion? All in favor of say aye? One other thing on that, if that does fall through, there is the possibility of maybe moving the entrance on the north end of that, going in there to it, and closing that entire end off where the traffic gets just one down.
That's right.
That's a possibility.
We have to be open to options there.
On that grant too, I would encourage you to, which the representatives here tonight, so I think we need to make the congressman very aware of what's happening with this, and see if maybe letters can be written or support can be generated to fund that or award that grant in this direction.
And I, Mr. Louder and his colleagues and congressman and our staff have been very aggressive in reaching out and lending us enough opportunities, and so we'll definitely reach out whenever we apply for federal grant needs, maybe a little bit of assistance. I did receive, along the same lines, an email from Senator Buzz Staff, it was a weekend, much along the same lines, and so we'll definitely reach out to his staff as well as Mr. Tillis, wherever we can.
Okay, thank you. Next, is D, property exposure, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. We had received a request from a person in your, in your packet there, not necessarily an unsolicited request, but we have on our county website a page where we used to have five or six different properties that were for sale, thankfully sold all of those except for one that is currently more or less split between Crescent Avenue and Front Avenue and Marion. If you've been around a while, Mr. Walter might remember, for example, that what was called the Plus Heirs donated that property, it was actually part of the fundraising for the senior center of Hawaii, they donated property and blew the cash donation, said their names on a plaque somewhere in the building, thanks for the property. And so you have an offer that has been made at eight thousand dollars, it's quite a bit below the current tax value, didn't reach out to the assessor for any insights on the twenty-three value, and I did not hear back from her.
I would, I would wait till we get information back from the town.
I would agree with that.
Before making any decisions.
We made a five, and, you know, that's a priority, and we needed information on that, so we can't make a decision, my opinion, like you guys said.
I think I made a.
That needs to be carried out with precision, when you ask for that, and the bid is a five, it needs to be produced.
Okay, revisit that later. Next, the Montefiore Trail Extension Grant.
Thank you. We have received the attached requests from the Friends of Montefiore State Trail, they are applying for what's called an RTP, Recreation Trails Program Grant, and so there's a resolution of endorsements.
Make a motion to approve the grant endorsement.
Motion said, resolution. Discussion. All in favor of say aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Wood, the administrative items.
I have a very long list, and before I get to it, Mr. Keller did text me a few minutes ago, wasn't paying attention to meeting, I promise, but he meant to ask in the ordinance's approval, I mentioned this to a few of you, as you asked, currently, we receive a fine or a fee from an ordinance, it just goes back into your own fund, there was a request associated with that from the fire commission, that the responding departments be paid back whatever fines to like cover gas and time.
I'm okay with that.
I'm agreeing to follow that.
Say it. Any other discussion?
And that would be shared between the responding.
We should speak to Ms. Bell about that.
All in favor of say aye? You both.
Thank you. There are a lot, and that's an understatement, a lot of admin items, would you like me to go through each one, Mr. Brown?
I don't see the need, we've had a chance to look at them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the admin items as presented.
Say it. Any discussion from you?
And that would include your resolutions, everything being approved in those items.
Thank you.
All in favor of say aye? Okay, thank you. Assistant comments, is there?
Y'all weren't signed up.
Nobody signed up, okay, good. Mission staff, which I think Mr. Ellis had some.
Yeah, I do want to try to talk about next week, our meeting on the health insurance, how we are in comparison, last year, we did talk mid-year of where we were in comparison to the insurance update, and if you don't mind, we'll get that ready for next week. Also, I would like to suggest, I'm not making a motion tonight, to go with a five-year budget instead of a three-year budget because of the expenses and stuff that we are starting to see out in the future, and then lastly, I would like to ask, because it's getting ready to get into budgeting season, to ask that all nonprofit getting that the county gives to all nonprofits to be, to get it separately, so that we can kind of look at that and make some decisions from that.
Yes, agree with that.
So I'm just asking staff for, for that assistance right now.
Sure. I will mention, on the insurance item, we do have a meeting set up Thursday to go everything through December, so it takes them quite a while to make sure all the claims have been compiled through that time period. I'll note now and then, whenever else, we do feel like claim entries are lagging for whatever reason, and so I've asked the broker to find out from our third-party administrator why it's happening, because what I'm afraid of is that we might have a rosy picture, and it's, maybe it's rosy, maybe it's not, and so I just anecdote, maybe a lag, so we'll address that one thing. I do have a timing update for an event, and we'll make sure it's on your calendar if you're not aware of it already. Mr. Marsh has invited you and asked you to be present on Saturday, February eighteenth, and Monday, February twentieth, for what is called the Commissioners Cup, which is the basketball championship, so make sure you've got those dates and times on your calendar.
Your motion would adjourn.
Say it.
Vote aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.